Welcome to the City of Claussen Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 18. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Father, let us say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for our many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for our friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for our neighbors, for Claussen and the state of Michigan. Amen. Row call, please.
Mayor Loobes?
Here.
Councilmember Eris?
Here.
Councilmember Horton?
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Here.
We've received a request to amend the agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the agenda be amended to allow the following items. Number 6A, consideration of a proclamation declaring the month of April Fair Housing Month, and 6B, consideration of closure of North Main Street, June 16th and 17th, 2017, for the first CraftCom event.
Support. Row call, please.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes. On the consent agenda this evening, our approving the minutes from our last council meeting, April 4th, our budget workshop, April 11th, and the appointment of Reece Scripture to the alternate position on the zoning board of appeals.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as listed.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Row call, please.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
The next item is a legislative update from our state representative, Martin Howerlich. And thank you for taking the time out of your week in Lansing, or weeks in Lansing, to come and provide an update for us.
I'm at three places usually, Lansing, Claussen, and Troy, although I haven't been able to successfully do that simultaneously. But that's why I've been blessed with people like Mr. Ray Watson, Ms. Amanda Gill, who are my assistants in Lansing as they were last year, or I should say Lansing, Claussen, and Troy, because you guys know that Ray is often in district as well. So, this thing seems incredibly big compared to my head, but, um, but, um, let's see here. So, I wanted to kind of, you know, it's been a while since I've stood before you, and wanted to just kind of give you a bit of an update. The legislature kicked off again in 2017 here, and similar to last year, or excuse me, similar to the last term, I'm on the House Oversight Committee, which has now been split into two. So, the oversight is no longer oversight and ethics. Ethics has been attached to the Elections Committee for some reason. But, um, anyway, so the House Oversight Committee, House Tax Policy Committee, the Judiciary Committee on Law and Justice is the new criminal justice. And I've been forcing myself not to call it the Law and Order Committee, because that's what I seem to want to do, but I'm on those four committees. I'm not on the Joint Committee on Administrative Rules this year, but that is not a worry. We are definitely very busy. So, a couple things before I forget, I like, because I usually end with this, I'm going to start with it this time. Local events here for the office this Friday is our periodic, we used to call them senior brigades and doggone it, I keep forgetting what we call it now, Consumer Education Event. Did I get it? Yeah, Consumer Education Event. And with food thrown in by yours truly over here at the Claussen Community Center, the Hundred Community Center, from 11:00 to 12:30, although it really ends up being more like 11:01. And that's this Friday, the 21st, again, it's from 11:00 to about 1:00. Our focus is on identity theft and the Consumer Education Office of the Attorney General will be presenting, and then again, we have lunch and fellowship, if you will, afterwards, provided by me. And we always go away with full stomachs, not empty stomachs, and some folks like to come out with bags full of food, but that's fine, it's all in good sport, and we'd like to make sure that people don't go away not hungry. So, on Saturday in Troy, from 3:00 to 4:30, the, at the library in Troy, the Troy Library, will be office hours. Then on May Day, May 1st, from 3:30 to 5:00, over here at the Claussen Library, we will be having Claussen office hours. And then, I should talk about a couple bills that I've introduced. One which is a nod to, or excuse me, a memorial to a tragic event that happened in Troy in 1974, no, not my birth, but the, the ex, the, in 1974, we had our first violent, and only thankfully, violent officer killed in the line of duty in the city of Troy was in 1974. So, and his name was Officer Marty Chivvis, and so, I have a bill, House Bill 4191, to remember Marty Chivvis by naming the I-75 overpass over Rochester Road, the Marty Ship, uh, excuse me, the Officer Martin Marty Chivvis Memorial Highway. And as, as, as folks who've been around for a long time may know, that Officer Chivvis was murdered in the line of duty, he was shot in the face at the old mobile gas station over there at Rochester and I-75. For those of you who are younger, who have no idea that there used to be a gas station there, there did used to be a gas station there, just north of the exit there at I-75 in Rochester. And then another bill I'm really excited about is House Bill 4466. Colloquially, I've called it the distracted driving bill, it's not nearly that broad. It's really a bill to modernize and update the current statute and the Michigan compiled laws dealing with text messaging, because as we know, on our handheld portable electronic devices, such as the one I have with me in my pocket, text messaging is one of only about an infinite number of things that can happen on the phone. And for those of you who like to be expeditious about your driving and yet still go the speed limit, you will be very well aware that oftentimes when you're in a left turn lane, there's somebody in front of you who is more interested in what's happening on their mobile device than they are on actually perhaps using, utilizing the services of the green arrow in there for you, end up staying a little bit extra longer at that particular section of the earth, also known as the left turn lane. But also for those of us who like to drive safely as well, it's really kind of freaky when you see somebody flying all over I-75 or I-96, or Big Beaver Road or Main Street out here, because quite frankly, they decided that they can also drive and maybe not look at the road at the same time, which isn't, which is not advisable thing. So, what does this bill do? It updates the language, and so we have a more pointed definition, rather than just referring to text messaging, and I can get into the details if you want, but we also put some teeth into it as well. We have a stricter fine, starting at $250, and then going up to $500, and then with the second occurrence, there would be a point added to, to the ticket as well, it would be a primary offense. What can you do? You could still, you know, do a one swipe, if you will, and certainly audit, um, voice activated is fine as well, if you initiate the phone call before you enter the car, or you use a voice activation system, and it's mount, and also if you have a GPS, that's fine too, as long as it's mounted on the dashboard, not obstructing your vision. So, we're gonna, we're gonna really push this bill pretty hard, because the current statute that we have is outdated and very diff, and somewhat difficult to enforce, because the language is a little bit flimsy. And this is a reintroduction of a bill that I had last year, but it's also improved as well, because we found out that the original bill inadvertently grabbed in some civil defense folks, particularly in the handheld, excuse me, the ham radio community, which is definitely an issue of civil defense, because they are a last line of communication when systems go out, ham radio operators are the only lines of communication left. I've learned a lot about this, and we also wanted to make sure that we didn't inadvertently grab in our folks in the level, level 1, 2, 3, and 4 automated vehicles. There's a lot going on right now, technology is moving fast, and we've got a current statute that really represents 1990's technology. So, that is another bill. Now, onto some bad stuff. So, we, there are three, three packages of bills working their way through the legislature, and I'm happy to say that none of them emanated in the House. The, it's, it's welfare for developers, if you will, and put this in the context of the fact that in 2000, well, really 2010, and the end of 2009, so 2009 and 2010, we pa, uh, we, the state, not me and you, but the state of Michigan, in its effort to swing for the fences, if you will, gave out about $16 billion of refundable tax credits. And keep in mind that, on an annual basis, even though our budget right now is about $54 billion, what I call domestic taxing and spending, if you will, money that's actually directly taxed or raised by fees in the state of Michigan by the state government, is only about $22 to $24 billion. The rest of it is, you know, money that we send to Washington, they give, give us some of it back with all sorts of strings attached. So, if we give out, think about this, in 18 months, if we give out $16 billion of tax credits, when in a 12-month period, we only collect about $22 billion or $24 billion of actual pristine revenue in the state of Michigan, that was clearly unsustainable. And so, the bill for that, over a 20-year period, averages somewhere between $500 million and $1 billion a year, in other words, in what that was for, for tax reta, or refundable tax credits for retention. So, in other words, the big three threatened to close down factories and leave the state of Michigan, and we pay the king's ransom to, to keep them open and in the state of Michigan, and in return, we get no ta, basically for all intents and purposes, we get negative tax revenue from the big three, and some of our tier-one auto suppliers are in the same situation. So, in order to double down on a really bad idea, the Senate has decided to introduce three, three packages of bills, which are even worse, because the, we have, in our Tax Policy Committee, we had a presentation by the Upjohn Institute, which is a research institution based out of Kalamazoo, and they have a number of economists that do studies, and they found that Michigan's tax incentive program is extremely expensive and profoundly ineffective, because it's not targeted. So, if you believe in tax incentives, at the very least, you want to get the most bang for your buck. We don't, and then we're going to actually double down and give out money to developers. And the first needy developer who started the whole thing off is a, is a guy you may have heard of. Not many people have heard of him, his name is Dan Gilbert, he's very poor, and he needs a lot of money to do projects. And so, the first package of bills, I'm really upset about this, I must admit, so I, um, it's, the first package of bills will cost the state a cool $40 million a year over 20 years, which, if you do the math, it's $800 million. As bad as that is, there are two other bills which are even worse, so when you, two packages of bills, so when you put them all together, we're looking at upwards of $300 million of negative tax revenue to the state over, over anywhere from 20 years to forever. And what that does effectively is, is it creates a burden on the system, because we still have to provide all of the services to whatever is created by these projects. So, for example, a project that would not, otherwise not be economical, is now made economical because the state is giving the money, but it could have been economical perhaps under a different iteration, and other projects that are not getting state money, that are perhaps close by or competitors, are no, are now no longer economical. So, it creates a distortion. And by the way, for those of us in the suburbs, who are still trying to absorb office space, it makes it much more difficult, because it will flood the market, especially in Detroit, and quite frankly, it's not just Detroit, these are statewide bills, they've got projects lined up all over the state, including the Silverdome site, that would be a part and parcel of these, recipients of these bills. I can go into more detail either here or offline, if you'd like, but it just makes it much more difficult for cities and local governments to do their job, because as we know, all projects come with a burden to civilization, and we all need to share in that burden, and if, and if a group of people are not carrying their weight, then, then either what happens is either your infrastructure falls apart, or somebody, or you have to cut corners on police and other first-line services, or somebody else has to pay, or other people have to pay a lot more than they otherwise would. That's why I really believe these are bad bills. I think they're coming from a good place, I think that the people that are supporting them are really interested in reinvigorating cities, which we all are, but there's a better way to do it, a more effective way to do it, where perhaps the burden is shared over the entire state, as opposed to the benefits being shared by only a handful of few people. So, anyway, I'll stop talking and see if you guys have any questions, but if nothing else, keep in mind that this Friday here in Claussen, we've got a really good event at the Community Center.
Thank you. Thank you for always looking out for our interests, we appreciate that. You're the numbers guy, so keep at it.
Sure, sure.
I do have one question. With the distracted driving bill, how does, what does enforcement look like? You know, do police officers pull over those they suspect are driving distracted, or how does that, how does that work?
Well, I, the, so with the bill, it becomes more clear. In other words, you have a very specific definition. In other words, obviously, if you have a device that, that, you know, that, that you're, that you're using, it requires more than just a one swipe. I mean, I think it's pretty, pretty obvious that you were doing something in your vehicle that you weren't, because right now, you could just say, hey, I was using WhatsApp, or hey, I was, I was surfing the internet. So, unless they want to charge, and it wouldn't actually fall under the statute unless they want to charge under, say careless driving or reckless driving. The benefit for people that may actually be pulled over for this is that you wouldn't have to be charged under reckless driving or careless driving, whereas, you know, if they really wanted to pursue it right now, they wouldn't, probably could, especially if you were driving all over the road, but this would give you, the police another tool to use in other, in, in order to enforce safe driving. The, you can always look at something and say, it's not enforceable. Pretty much anything that's illegal still happens, and you know, people still get away with murder unfortunately, and people certainly drive like maniacs on I-96, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have laws for safe and reasonable traffic issues, and we certainly need to have laws to make sure that people have the right to life. So, the, the law enforcement community, especially, you know, Troy had an ordinance, still has an ordinance, which really isn't, and they've told me, is not enforceable, but they've really used it for educating the public and bringing awareness to the issue to the people that they do pull over. The issue is that now we would have a statewide law, and again, we're not even dealing with this issue of french fries or potatoes, or what you can and cannot eat in your vehicle, it's very strict, and talking about handheld portable mobile devices. And this is not something that has, as a matter of fact, a lot of your western countries, developed countries, already have this on the books, so a lot of your states do, if you're in the state of Maryland, you can't even talk on the phone in your automobile. So, this is kind of finding a nice middle ground that makes sense, and it is enforceable.
I appreciate it.
Sure. I have a question as well. It's about the bill that you said that's going through the Senate right now, with regards to owner of Quicken Loans. You know, it, obviously, the bill does not name him, but it must be with respect to some buildings that he's purchased, are these buildings, do they have, are they brownfield projects, or are they?
So, that's the other thing too, is, you know, we're, we're operating, you know, the vernacular is as if there aren't other tools already, and we've, and so, the projects that he would be looking at doing would already be abated and paying no property taxes anyway, and they'd be also getting some other credits and assistance from the state, and also from the city as well, and then on top of it, then they would actually be grabbing more money out of the general fund, and they would be using a source revenue as, as wage income tax withholdings. And then there's the question, which I have yet to have unresolved, excuse me, have yet to have resolved, is whether or not the, the reimbursement from the state, if you will, is even taxable for federal purposes, so there could actually be a federal tax benefit as well. In other words, if you could pay the wage taxes and also get it back without having to pay income tax on it at the federal level, would actually kind of put steroids on this. The, Dan Gilbert is the one, obviously, it's Hudson's site, but obviously, he's interested in his project, but in order to get it through the legislature, they basically had to bribe other districts all across the state and create this thing called the MI Thrive Coalition. They actually have all of their projects already lined up across the state. The, for example, there's one in Tecumseh, it's the old Tecumseh plant, the Silverdome is potentially one as well, but then, and this is, and they're actually in the House now, they passed the Senate, they're in the Tax Policy Committee, they may or may not be voted out of committee tomorrow, you can assure, be assured that I'll be voting against it, they are bad policy. There, but the two other pack, and so this is a package of, of three bills, and then there are two other packages of bills, which are actually 10 times worse than this, numerically at least, they're 10 times worse. This one supposedly limits it to $40 million a year for 20 years, but I can assure you that in my limited time in the legislature, and also my time in local government, I can tell you that state legislatures, one thing that they're, that they do a lot, is they lift limits and remove sunsets. So, if there's a sunset on this bill of 20 years, it'll be either removed or extended, and if there's a limit of $40 million, it'll be extended as well. By the way, another thing that's going to take money out of the hands of local governments and schools, is there's, there are also bills, I think, also coming out of the sunset to accelerate a tax credit, or excuse me, a, a, um, sales tax exemption scheme for dealerships, and that would be for automobiles and for boats. And the, in order to get the governor to sign on to this, what they had to do is have a, I think, a 40-year phase-in period, they basically want to just chop that and bring it, accelerate it right now. So, that would cost somewhere in the 200 to 300 million dollars a year as well. And then on top of it all, the House, the House leadership doesn't want to pass any of these other bills unless they get an income tax cut too, so. Oh, and by the way, the Senate Fiscal Agency yesterday said that tax revenues for the month of March were significantly below expectations, but because it, you know, because of the variations in month to month, they said not to get alarmed, we need to find out where we are, perhaps as we get more into the year. Anyway, so those, those, I got way off, off your question, but hopefully I answered it. So, it's a Hudson's site in Detroit is what he's looking at. And so, yeah, the, and like I said, there's, there's other, you know, he wouldn't be paying property taxes on it. And what, what interesting thing, the way they'll do it, and the way he's doing it specifically, is they would actually be taking the, the revenue anticipation from the state to reimburse them, and, and issuing notes, basically, revenue anticipation notes, basically, it would go into the capital structure. So, one of the things I brought up was, hey, look, if we're effectively part of the capital structure, can we at least share in the wealth? And the answer is, no, you can't. I said, well, why not? It's never been done before. Well, that's not a reason not to, because we're basic, we're basically part of the capital structure of these projects. In other words, they can't happen without our equity infusion, and our equity infusion is what we're paying them. So, why shouldn't we, the taxpayers, share in the wealth of this? I don't know.
Yeah, I think a lot of people always wonder how we build stadiums and the residents pay for, you know, half of it.
It's a wealth transfer, that, you know, you know, if somebody is earning $40,000 a year, which is not a lot of money, why should they be the ones that's having the money basically go and transmit it to somebody who's worth $4 billion, not paying a billion dollars, $800 million, doesn't really matter, even if they're poor, it doesn't matter, you're taking from somebody and you're giving it to somebody else. And then the rest of us now have to find a way to even pay more money to support the infrastructure that, that has no tax support whatsoever. There's no tax support on this. The only tax that would be paid on that project would be the, the, would be the city income tax, that's the only tax that's left.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who wants to vote on these, Marty? I'm sorry.
The, well, it's in it, the first of the three packages of bills, which I colloquially refer to as the Dan Gilbert Bills, they're also known as the MI Thrive by the promoters of it, but they're in Tax Policy Committee for their second hearing tomorrow, and if they have the votes, they'll vote it out of committee, at which point, you know, there's some negotiations going on between House Leadership and the Senate. The Speaker of the House has been pretty clear that, that he wants an income tax cut, or, or they'll find it difficult to put it up on the board, like an in, income tax cut. And what I, the tea leaves are telling me that these bills will pass the House and go to the governor's office, along with a one-tenth of a 1% income tax cut. That, that's me reading tea leaves. And I have no interest in facilitating the passage of bad policy, but that's kind of where I see this going. I don't know about the other two packages. I think Gilbert's going to unfortunately get his bills.
Thank you.
Bet that he will.
I mean, he does nice work, but, you know, he should not need the state to kind of pony up all that money.
Infrastructure support is a big thing in the state of Michigan, and, you know, roads and sewer systems, and the way, we have to build infrastructure to support these large projects.
Sure. I mean, you can, conceivably, there could be a really big project where the Silverdome used to be, and all of those roads and sewers and police and all, all of the burden, if you will, that comes with that project, and there would be no, no tax revenue from the state to support whatever had to happen. So, they would take from Claussen and Troy and wherever else, money that would otherwise go to save revenue sharing your schools, would now be diverted to build, say, schools and infrastructure to support the project that's not paying any tax revenue.
When we've raised the gas tax again to support roads, and then we turn around and give tax credits to billionaires, it kind of leaves a poor taste in your mouth.
The states and, states and cities just need, we just need to all do our basic government functions, and not get in, getting into playing developer and picking and choosing winners and losers like that.
Thank you for being against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martin.
Our next agenda item looks at Fair Housing Month. This month, April, marks the 49th anniversary of the signing of the federal fair housing law under the Civil Rights Act. This landmark law, along with other federal and state legis, legislation broadens, broadens access to housing regardless of race, color, sex, age, marital status, religion, disability, or family status.
Madam Mayor, I move the proclamation declaring the month of April 2017 as Fair Housing Month, and the city of Claussen be approved.
Board.
Row call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
The next item looks at closing North Main Street from Friday, June 16th through Saturday, June 17th, for the first CraftCom, a local family-oriented festival showcasing artisan craft makers, comics, Star Wars superhero characters, children's activities sponsored by Whole Foods, a dunk tank, Pistons basketball, General Food hot dogs, and more.
Madam Mayor, I move the CraftCom request to close North Main Street between Bowers and 14 Mile Road on Friday, June 16th, 2017, through Saturday, June 17th, 2017, from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM for the first CraftCom event be approved as recommended by administration.
Support.
Any comments or questions?
I have, I thought that the police chief was going to be here. I was, I read a little bit of his report, but what was his final comments on southbound traffic on Friday, coming into town with Main Street closed?
Well, I understood from our meeting that a detour would be posted.
Early on, so that people could go, Elmwood being the preferable route, so that the notice would be a month in advance, you know, Maple Road, you know, starting in Troy, Royal Oak, so that people were aware that it was going to be closed, and Elmwood would be the detour.
So, we'd have, we'd have Main Street, basically, a detour there, saying no through traffic, so that we don't have traffic pouring onto Bowers and Broadacre and?
Correct. Right.
And we thought that the first, the first year may be rough, but similar to the Fourth of July, that people would, if we, if it was a, a nice event, that people would just be aware and divert based on it being held.
Just, just to be clear, the timeframe there is 12 o'clock PM on Friday, June 16th, through 11:00 PM Saturday, June 17th, correct?
That's what I was told.
For the road closure, yes.
And I wanted to, it was based on our police forces professionalism, and wanted to make sure that they kept the citizens and our, the CraftCom people safe, because the organization did not request to have Main Street closed on Friday, but based on the event itself, the Police Department has made that recommendation. So, I just wanted, they did not ask for Main Street to be closed on Friday evening.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
It would be an exciting event. The next item is from the Claussen Community Coalition, and our director is here. The next item is from the Claussen Community Coalition, and our director is here, Bev Owen, so I would invite you up to tell us about the campout and the prescription take-back day.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing Claussen Community Coalition to be on the agenda this evening. I am representing the executive board members of the Claussen Community Coalition. And in regards to the two items that Madam Mayor just mentioned, I would like to just give you just a brief of the Claussen Community Coalition's mission statement. Our statement is to offer educational programs for the community to promote positive activities and healthy living. Be a part of the solution. Then I would just like to go back and just share some things with you that the Claussen Community Coalition has done within the last few months. We had an opportunity of having our youth dialogue day. We were able to be in this building over on the other side in the community room. The Claussen Public Schools, uh, they were able to allow us to have the students in the middle school as well as the high school that wanted to participate. We were able to issue permission slips. Those students were allowed to attend the afternoon event, which was during school hours. But because of this event being such an educational event, the schools granted us permission to allow those students with parent's permission to be dismissed from school and to join us here in this building. Of course, as always, we continue to educate and promote prevention to substance abuse and also give additional information in regards to bullying, suicide, and other topics that are extremely important. That took place in March. Just last week, Claussen Community Coalition, along with FAN, F-A-N, Families Against Narcotics, were able to go into the high school. We had speaker that, um, talked in regards to prescription drug prevention. And this is not our first time going into the high school, allowing all the students during school hours to participate. So it wasn't an after-school program. All the students that were in the building did attend this event. As Mayor Loobz mentioned, we are now looking forward to our annual, which is the National Drug, Prescription Drug Take-Back Day. Claussen Police Department has once again teamed up with us. This is our second time teaming up here in the city as doing it in the same day that is considered to be the national. We've done it several times, but a lot of time scheduled does not allow us to do it when it's the actual national. But this year, we are able to say that on Saturday, April the 24th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM here in this building, we will be able to allow the community as well as anyone that's outside of the communities that have any prescription drugs that, whether they're expired or whether they're just drugs that they're no longer using, they could come into this building throughout those hours. And there will be officer here that will be able to take the drugs, and the drugs will be put into our prescription medicine box that every since 2012, the month September, Claussen has had that box here in this building. So I say that to say to the, any ears that may not be aware, there is a box here at the Claussen City Hall, at the Claussen Police Department, and the hours are on the website as well. And if anyone need additional information, please feel free to contact the Claussen Community Coalition at 248-546-9777 for additional information, or you can contact the Claussen Police Department. The hours are listed. Just to say, the prescription drug take-back day is something for everyone, no matter whether you are a child or an adult, there will be some fun activities, there'll be a lot of items to give away at no cost. There's a free raffle, and many people will walk away with a mini box, which is a small, uh, prescription lockbox. So even though it's small, but it will allow adults to be able to lock up their prescription medicine because it has a key with it as well. Just to mention the Claussen Community Family Campout that Mayor Loobz mentioned, just to re-estate that, we have had many campouts here in the city of Claussen. We have not had one since 2013. I can say that it's truly been a blessing for me to be one of the people that have organized this event. We've always had a lot of fun, even though we're just right here in Claussen City Park on Elmwood, it just seems like when we're camping that we're far away, like we're up north somewhere. And it's always such a wonderful thing for the families. We've had, throughout the years that we have not had an opportunity to do this event, we've had multiple residents that may see us just throughout the city, or whether we're in the schools, or wherever we are, and we see the parents. A lot of times they say, hey, Mrs. Owens, when are we going to have that campout? I say, we're still working on it, but what a blessing it is. So now that we could be able to publicly say, with your permission, I granted, that if we could, uh, get a yes on this, it would really be a blessing. Just to mention to you, some of our funding come from the, uh, ACHC, which is the Alliance of Healthy Coalitions and Communities, as well as the Oakland Community Mental Health Authority. I needed to mention that because with the coalition doing what we do, we would not be able to stand without those two organizations bringing funding to us to allow us to do what we do. And then, of course, I cannot neglect to say the city of Claussen and everyone that is in front of me this evening, as well as Claussen School District, to be as supportive as you have been. We are very grateful.
Bev's tent set up for the campout on June 2nd at 5:00 PM or 5:30? What time is tent set up?
Actually, we're planning to have as many that would like to come early as 2:30 to come and register. There will be pre-registration. The information is on, or I should say, will be on the Claussen website. And, uh, we've actually already completed a lot of paperwork, so all we need is just a stamp of approval, I should say that. But the information will actually have the specifics of everything that a family would really need to know prior to coming, what to bring, what not to bring, what to do, what not to do. Then, of course, uh, the Claussen Community Coalition 24-hour number that I just mentioned a few moments ago is available for anyone that have additional questions. But to answer your question, Mayor, setup for registration can start as early as 2:30 on the 2nd of June.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Beth?
Yes.
I can ask you a question there.
Yes.
Are you going to allow the small trailers there to camp also, or is it just tents?
In the past, we have allowed small trailers, but it has to be approved. There have been maybe two, I can say, maybe three in the past, but it's always, it's always been pre-arranged prior. I know my RV is always there because that's like the area for the office for whenever someone needs something, regardless of what time of night it is, it's a spot that they know they can go to and always have signs on the outside so that if it's an emergency, someone would know where to come to for help. But, uh, with all that being said, we are not promoting this to be an event to have multiple campers, but if they are families that have a camper, then we would do what's necessary to get that approved. But we are promoting tents.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move the request by the Claussen Co, Community Coalition to have a family campout on June 2nd through June 3rd, 2017, at the Claussen City Park, be approved. Support.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. Do you mind if I add just, uh, two more events moving forward to the calendar of the Claussen Community Coalition, just so the public could hear these things now, if you don't mind?
All right. Let's hear it.
Thank you very much for your permission. On last year, we were able to apply for a grant, and this grant was through the two organizations that I just mentioned in regards to mental health, as well as ACHC, and we were granted funding. So therefore, last summer, we were able to give Claussen middle and high school students one free week of day camp, and everything was included at no cost for the parents. And when I say everything, I'm speaking of, for when they enter, they had, uh, continental breakfast, then throughout the day, it was all different type of learning activities, afternoon, for lunch, several snacks throughout the day. And this event ran from 10:00 AM until 4 o'clock PM. We were able to have the event at the Crossroads Church here in Claussen, right across the street from the post office, right on Main Street. Uh, we're not sure right now of the location for this year, but we do have funding for this event, and we're super excited. We are anticipating, looking at the month of August for this event to take place, but we will have more information to come. But we're very excited to be able to offer parents a free camp for the students for a complete week, that they could have fun at the same time of learning. And then last but not least, it's time for the Claussen Community Coalition to have our prayer breakfast again in October. And we had two years of a break from the prayer breakfast in regards to not having funding, but we have the funding, and we're planning it, and it's scheduled for Tuesday, October the 24th. Each prayer breakfast, we honor someone from the community. It could be a teacher, or it could be a board member of whichever organization. It could be a mayor. Oh, okay, just to say this, this year, we're honoring Mayor Penny Loobz, and we're very excited. I wanted to make this a surprise for her, but of course, sometime when you want to surprise someone, you end up getting surprised because maybe Mayor may have something on her calendar and not able to make it for that day. So with that being said, the Claussen Community Coalition Executive Board came together and we thought, well, maybe we should at least mention it to the mayor and see if her calendar is available. It appears that she's available that day. So we're looking so forward to that particular day of the Claussen Community Coalition. And, um, I would love to give you guys a hug after the meeting, but I have to leave, and I apologize, I have another evening commitment. But again, we thank you very much for adding us to the agenda. Thank you very much for saying yes to the annual campout, and I'm so excited to say annual because I'm looking forward to doing it again in next year. Are there any additional questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Loobz?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
The next item is a request by our Chamber of Commerce, Commerce Together with Bodyworks Chiropractic to host a fun run on October 1st. The run, um, begins at 8:30 in the morning and concludes at 9:30 in the morning. Follow-up activities would take place in the City Hall Community Room until noon. A professional run coordinator will help with organization before and during the event. They plan to have enough volunteers posted at all intersections along the route.
Madam Mayor, I move the request by the Claussen Chamber of Commerce Together with Bodyworks Chiropractic Center to host a fun run in the city of Claussen on October 1st, 2017.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobz?
Yes. The next item looks at rescheduling the Tuesday, November 7th regular city council meeting. That is election night, uh, and we need all the rooms for election night, and generally, this is where the absentee ballots are counted on election night. So looking to move the council meeting to either Monday, November 6th, or Wednesday, November 8th.
I prefer Wednesday, November 8th.
I would prefer Wednesday as well.
I prefer Monday.
I understand.
It's up to you. It's your pleasure.
Madam Mayor, I move the regular city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, be changed to Wednesday, November 8th, 2017.
Support.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobz?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
The National Association of Letter Carriers, um, our postal service is sponsoring the 25th Annual National Food Drive Day on Saturday, May 13th. So Claussen residents are encouraged to leave non-perishable food in or near their mailbox on this date. The food is generally divvied up between the Claussen Food Pantry and, uh, cleaners and other food pantries in Oakland County.
Mayor, I move the resolution proclaiming Saturday, May 13th, 2017, as the National Association of Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive in the city of Claussen be approved.
Support.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobz?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
The next item looks at the bills to be paid in the next two weeks.
Madam Mayor, pay the bills.
Support.
For, for a minute, I thought we weren't going to pay the bills. Any questions on the bills?
I do. Uh, Mr. Pollak, um, there's a line item for Claussen District Court repairs for $4,400. Could you address that?
Yeah, the, the request was made to do some significant upgrades, uh, at the district court, uh, lockup facilities, jail facilities, replace doors, uh, and do some significant improvements. And since Claussen, Troy, and the county, uh, all utilized those facilities, we agreed to split the costs, so that is our portion. Uh, they estimated it to be under $5,000, and our portion in the end turned out to be about $4,400. So I will check with our auditor to see if that's the proper line item, or if he wants us to move that to another item. It's not our facility, but I don't know if capital's the right place to put it. He may want us to put it in a, like a building maintenance. But I'll check with him to see if we need to adjust that.
I, I understood we have a contract with Troy, and they provide our jail services. So would not this type of upkeep or upgrade belong to the facility because we have a contract that pays for this?
No, not necessarily. This is a capital improvement of some substance to provide better security. So that's outside of the operation agreement that we have with them.
Is not our contract report that Troy will maintain our jail services, so would not it be up to Troy to do that?
But this is a capital expenditure of some difference. They maintain the premises, obviously, but this is an expansion of the premises, an improvement of the premises.
So if we didn't have a contract with Troy, we wouldn't be doing this. It's not, uh, the $4,400 is not a large amount. All of our $4,400 additions to our budget seem to add up throughout the 12 months, but...
But this is an enhanced security that was necessary.
Is this something that would typically come before council before?
Not necessarily. Uh, it could, but it's within the appropriate authority of the manager at $5,000 on it. So, and, and, uh, they, they made the disclosure at the outset on what had to be done and why it had to be done, and the security issues that were of concern, and they went out to bid on it. And this was the lowest bid that came in that was acceptable to them, qualified bidder.
Was this something that we, they anticipated when we, um, we did the contract?
I, I can't say that. I can say just from my reading of the documentation and the explanation they give, it was something that had come up recently regarding the need for more enhanced security of the holding cells. Uh, and, and what the circumstance was... And what the circumstance was or circumstances may have been age of the, of those components.
Well, we weren't privy to the documents and that's why I questioned what you're calling the capital improvement, which is what it is. My comment still remains that we have a contract for them to supply the needs and I don't know that in our contract, it said we'd be responsible for any capital improvement.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll get a look at the contract and give an answer.
Perfect. I would love that.
Was this bill split three ways between Troy?
Yeah, three ways.
Three equal parts?
Any other questions on the bills?
Final question, do Oakland County, the city of Troy, and the city of Clausen all use it equally?
I can't answer that.
Anything else on the bills? All right, row call, please.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loops?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
City attorneys report?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City managers report?
Just a quick update, our final two budget workshops are tomorrow night at 7:00 here at City Hall and then the final budget workshop will be on Tuesday next week, April 25th, also at 7:00 PM. And upon the conclusion of that and approval of budget by council, I will issue a five-year budget working document for council to approve as well. That's all I have.
And our next council meeting of May 2nd, are we having ordinance reviews?
You'll have the, hopefully, the 12 or 13 ordinances that have to be reorganized into our numbering system. You'll have that. You'll be getting a memo at some time next month regarding some other ordinances that will be done or presented to you in the next three months dealing with nuisances.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part. Other ordinances dealing with nuisances in the next three months?
That's a comprehensive rewrite of the ordinances.
Thank you. Any other business? Onto new businesses. We have upcoming this Sunday at 1:00, a bicycle ride led by a DIA docent. The bicycle ride will tour the 10 artworks in Clausen. We're going to start at Clausen City Park at 1:00. We estimate it will take about two hours. We'll be traveling to Barb's Pasties, the library, Carmen's Dairy, City Hall, City, well, we start at City Park, Evolve, Hunter Community Center, Palace Liquor, Phil Cavill's Auto, and Vail's Pet Supply. In April, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting their Dinner and Auction, which is one of their largest fundraisers throughout the year. So you would RSVP to the chamber if you're interested in attending. April 29th, you did hear from the Coalition Director about the Prescription Takeback Day. The highlights in May are our youth recognition awards sponsored by Youth Assistance, Wednesday, May 3rd at 7:00 at Hunter. We're taking nominations. Now there are forms in City Hall or city buildings or just email or send a message on the Youth Assistance Facebook site for the nomination form. May 7th is the Crop Lock, which is again a walk to raise pledges to stamp out hunger. And the money again will, a portion of the money will remain local. The majority of the money is going overseas to help combat hunger in the world. And that's a collaboration of all our churches in Clausen and Troy. So there are a lot of things we do together in Clausen and Troy. And May 21st starts our First Farmer's Market of 2017 with Flower Day. The market's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Clausen City Park. Anything else?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Lions Club will be out on the streets here at the end of the month from the 28th of April through May 7th. So be careful out there and don't run us over on the sidewalks. And I think that's about it. We have our, Lions Club has their garage sale coming up in the middle of May. We'll give you more details on that here as the first week of May. But we will give it, all the money goes towards all of our costs and everything else we have relationship with Lions Club, so that's it.
And you're also taking registrations for the car show in August?
Oh, yeah, I've already got them already. We're already starting to take them and the sponsorships and what have you. We will be out, I'm saying probably in the next two, three weeks, probably working a little harder on it. And that'll be it, yeah.
Is that August 12th?
August 12th will be the car show. As soon as I get the posters and stuff like that, I'll bring them up here and everybody can see it. Hope you all be there.
Thank you. One of the last items on our agenda is public discussion and the floor is now open for
Hi. My name's Danar Van Dresik. I spoke here, not at the previous meeting, but though, one before that, about people parking, where there were no parking signs on East Elmwood outside of Knights of Columbus and this having been approved by the city police chief with out contacting the city council, at least that's what you seem to believe at that meeting. Anyway, I sent you all an email before the last city council meeting. I heard back from a couple of you before the meeting. That email basically went over the discussion I had had with the city police chief. Since then, the parking situation, as far as I can tell, hasn't changed. I've been informed that they are now enforcing the no parking at, for the distance from the turn, which is a regulation separate from no parking signs. And also, they are now making sure that people do not park blocking the fire hydrant. However, the no parking signs are still being covered up. In my discussion with the police chief, he directed me toward a section of the Michigan Traffic Code. I read that over and I wasn't sure how that would apply to the situation. I mentioned this in the email to all of you. My understanding of it was that it was limited to periods not lasting more than six months and limited to not be a recurring situation. In my discussion with the police chief, he indicated that this had been going on for 30 years and was six weeks of the year, Fridays. And from my discussion with you, I had the impression that you were not being informed of it, which my reading of the traffic code section that he pointed me towards required that the city council be notified of it and also that a, I believe it was a TOC or a...
TCO?
TCO, be filed with the city clerk. To my knowledge, that hasn't been done, at least that was my impression from speaking with you. I was wondering if you had discussed this or taken any action at the previous meeting or if there were any plans to address this going forward. I know that Lent is over with Easter and Sunday having passed, but my understanding is that this is a yearly occurrence and if this is something that is to occur next year, my hope would be that it would go through the normal channels of being approved by, having a traffic review and being approved by the city council.
Are there particular, what particular days and times does this occur?
Friday evenings typically.
Fish fry.
Yeah.
We need a fish fry and Lent.
Yeah. And essentially, the road's not a residential road. And so it's a 35 mile an hour speed limit and it has a fairly decent amount of traffic.
Mr. Pollak, what's the status of this?
As the chief reported to you, he does this through a temporary traffic control order, which if you prefer, he will bring to you each time there is a temporary traffic control order. Without the Traffic and Safety Board, that's the authority he's asking for is to bring it directly to council with a recommendation. This can be done on an annual basis for this event and it will specifically notify which, I think the issue he was trying to eliminate was parking between the intersection of Main and the driveway. And I think the consensus was if they left the first no parking sign unbagged, that that would alleviate that. And then the police department also, as well as the KFC has agreed that they will make sure that that intersection stays clear so that they don't create a safety issue.
Okay.
One thing about that, there are three or four driveways for the Knights of Columbus off of East Elmwood. My understanding when I spoke with him, when he said that, was that it would be the driveway leading to their parking lot. I called the police the week before last week, I believe, because there were people parking ahead of that, closer to the intersection. And I was told that that was fine. So my understanding is that they are interpreting it as the driveway closest to the intersection. Also, while that does eliminate the most pressing of the safety concerns, there are, it's still reducing the size of the road, which it's really not zone for with cars going 35 miles an hour or more and the amount of traffic that that road gets.
I think part of what's going on is we've not had a Traffic and Safety Board meeting in some months because we don't have a quorum or enough members on the Traffic and Safety Board. The chief did speak with us regarding that. We either need to move forward and make an effort to recruit more members to hold those meetings or give the chief more authority. We did discuss that piece at our last meeting and decided to give it a three-month push to find more Traffic and Safety members. Historically, the Traffic and Safety Board isn't the most popular board and has had few, fewer applicants. So if there isn't an interest and we don't have a quorum to move forward to discuss these types of issues, then we are going to need to, either the council is the backdrop for it or the chief has more authority for that. But we did decide to give it three months to see what applicants we would obtain in this time.
Okay. What about documentation of the temporary traffic control orders?
Well, again, I'm going to defer to Mr. Pollak for that because I don't know anything about that one.
What he proposes is to bring a temporary traffic control order for that situation before council. And then have you, you know, approve it based on his recommendation with the concerns because he does, he does not want a safety issue, which is if they are parking, and the biggest concern was between the intersection and the first drive.
Right.
And he wants to make sure with cooperation of KFC that they don't allow parking there. And if they see someone parked there, that they move them because it's, that's the portion that he does not want to allow. The parking on the rest of the street, again, that's going to be up to council to decide. He'll give his recommendation based on the measurements of the street, speed limit, and then it'll be up to you to decide whether the temporary traffic control order will be granted.
So is that something that's going to come to the next council meeting or wait until the activity occurs in 2018?
I guess that's up to you. If you want him to discuss this situation before next year, before it happens again or before the next request, he can come and discuss that with you.
Before the next request, so would there be other times on Elmwood that this would happen?
I think the other, only other time they make the request is when there's a large being no jackpot and they're going to have overflow crowd. So when they know there's going to be extra people, that's usually when they make the request. But the chief said he could bring the temporary traffic control order before council each time. It's, again, it's, I think the reason it hasn't been done before, part of it's the Traffic and Safety Board, but I think part of it's, it's, he issues it each year, but it doesn't come before council. But what he would like to do is if that's the request, he would bring it before you.
Well, if we don't have a meeting of the Traffic and Safety Board, that would make sense to bring it here and tell council makes a decision on that direction.
Sure. And then that way, a resident would have an opportunity to come and discuss at this meeting when it's on the agenda.
Right.
And that might be the best solution. If we don't get a Traffic and Safety Board where a resident could speak, that might be the best solution because then they could come here and, you know, have their concerns addressed directly with the chief and council can make the decision based on that.
Right. That's right.
Madam Mayor, if I might, Danar, I appreciate you coming out here and the effort you've put into this. I personally appreciate your attention to detail. I do, I do want to make note, the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code does allow the traffic engineer to issue temporary traffic control orders that can last up to 90 days without our approval. So just, just to be clear on that, and then they, they would expire after 90 days.
Right, and they can't be recurring and I believe they have to be filed with the city clerk.
They do have to be filed with the city clerk, that's correct. And then I had another thought, but I'm learning that I need to start writing things down here. But no, I just wanted to say I appreciate that, you coming out here and bringing this to our attention for sure and not letting go.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Cheers to me putting the heart, you know, jumping the gun a little bit, but when we start issuing these, is that something that would be appropriate to put on the website so that the citizens around know that there was a formal process and to notify them of what specifically the police department has put in place for that time?
Yeah, I can talk to chief about that. I don't, I don't, Michelle may know, I don't know if there's a requirement like there is for, but it might be done as a courtesy, I think, to the people that are going to be impacted that they give a notification. So that might, that might be something he does as a courtesy to let people know it's coming before council.
Doing that might also let other businesses know that that's an option available to them to at least look into, which would be nice.
Thank you. Anyone else for public discussion? All right, public discussion is closed.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Support.
Row call, please.
Mayor Loops?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Yes.
Take care, everybody. Take care, everybody.